All this meeting to order, will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Into the Republic.
Like which stands?
One nation. Indivisible, liberty.
Yes, justice for all.
Alright, welcome everyone. Okay, up next, we have our rule call. Ms. Martinez?
Mayor Coleman?
Here.
Council Broyles? Council Daniel?
Here.
Council Vehill?
Here.
Council Hensley?
Here.
Council Carson?
Here.
And Council Grego?
Present.
All councilors present and the quorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez. Up next, we have agenda approval.
Mayor, on the agenda, we are going to move, remove item one A, the public hearing ordinance number one. We did, I did not get the public notice for the publishing posted for the public hearing, so we need to move it to February 3rd.
Okay, thank you so very much, and whoever makes the motion, make sure you mention that, okay? Alright, Council Grego?
I'll make the motion as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Martinez, will you take the vote?
Yes, sir. Council Grego?
Yes.
Council Carson?
Yes.
Council Hensley?
Yes.
Council Vehill?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Broyles?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, up next on the agenda, we have our citizen comment section, and this is where we allow the citizens to make comments, we do ask that you keep your comments within a three-minute timeframe. If you're still talking after three minutes, I will politely ask you to end your conversation. Later tonight, we have a hearing in regards to the proposal for the Alamosa Ranch. And for those of you who do not want to make comments during this part, we will have a lot more time for you to make comments that may not be limited to three minutes if you wait to the public hearing, and that will come a little bit further down on our agenda. But for those of you who would like to make comments, I am going to ask Ms. Martinez to give you instructions of how to raise your hand and participate in the citizen comment portion of this agenda.
Hey, so if you're on the Zoom app, there's a raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. You click on that, it'll let me see that you've raised your hand that you want to speak. If you're on the telephone dial star nine, and it'll raise your hand for you.
Okay, so right now, it appears that we have four attendees, and I, I recognize at least three of the names, and I'll wait to see if anyone raises their hand in regards to the public comment section. I believe some of the other members that are in the attendee are going to be a part of the hearing automatically. Okay, Ms.
I don't see anyone raising their hand, mayor.
Good, I don't see any hands, so at this time, we'll go ahead and close the citizen comment portion of the agenda, and we'll move on down to consent calendar A.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
A second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second discussion, Mr. Broyles.
I'd like to make a discussion, I just want to say that if you look at our revenues for the year, we're only down about eighty thousand dollars, which I think is outstanding, based what we've gone through. So I, I bring attention to that. Hopefully, maybe twenty twenty-one, we can make up for that and do better. But you know, I just, I thought that's remarkable, so tell Heather and Lisa Sandoval you did a good job.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Council Broyles, and I believe Ms. Brooks would like to make a comment. Her hand feature doesn't work on her computer, so she actually has to really raise her hand, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, and so yes, we are excited that that is how the revenues appear. I just want to make sure, though, from a, from a public perception perspective, it's eighty thousand less than last year from a revenue projection, but we projected a three percent increase in revenue. So from a budget perspective, it's actually a little bit bigger, but I just, yes, we managed to get through a good chunk of COVID, and it's still time to celebrate, but I always just want to make sure that we have that distinction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council Broyles for bringing it up, and thank you, Ms. Brooks, for your response. We have a motion, discussion, no further, no further discussion, we have a second. Ms. Martinez, will you go ahead and take the vote?
Yes, sir. Council Broyles?
Yes.
Council Hensley?
Yes.
Council Vehill?
Yes.
Council Grego?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, council, thank you, Ms. Martinez. That brings us down to our business brought forward by our city staff. The item is going to be a public hearing, a proposal for the Alamosa Ranch.
Thank you, mayor, before you open the public hearing, I'm going to do just a very quick overview of the two different proposals. They were attached to the agenda, so the information has been available to the public and for review for, for plenty of time, so that's why I'm not going to spend too much time. One proposal we received was from Mr. Manny Patel, and it is related to the construction of a RV resort on approximately fifty acres of that approximate seventy-five acres that has been identified in the Alamosa Ranch plan that is available for development if the right project comes along. Mr. Patel proposed for two different phases. The first phase would have ten cabins, ninety full hookup RV sites, ten tent sites, an office check-in and community building with a lot of amenities, a bath house, landscaping that would be drought resistant, children's playgrounds, small picnic pavilions, a lot of connections to the surrounding area and businesses, as well as potential downtown shuttle. And then phase two would occur after that and would add approximately another sixty-six one-hundred-foot RVs, fourteen seventy-five-foot RVs, and twelve more cabins. So that was a quick review of the proposal that went into a lot more detail at the work session last week. The other proposal that the city received is from Mr. Arnold Salazar. It's for approximately twenty-three acres or however much land is left after the fifty acres for the RV park surrounding Mr. Salazar's home, and the proposal is to swap for, for, for four lots on Sixth Street that are on East Six right before it turns into Denver. And so it's just for a straight across swap. And with that quick overview, if you want to open it up to the public hearing, you can do so.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Brooks, for that update. So at this time, we are going to open it up for public hearing. For those of you who are attendees at this particular time, this is where you have an opportunity to make any comments that you have in regards to this proposal. Ms. Martinez, will you please give the attendees instruction on how to raise your hand or either participate, whether they're on the cell phone or using their computer device?
Yes, sir, if you are on the Zoom app right now, you can use the raise your hand feature. Should be at the bottom of your screen, just click on that, it'll raise your hand, and then I'll see that you want to speak. If you are on the phone, dial star nine, and it'll raise your hand.
Okay.
I don't see anyone raising their hand.
I don't see anyone raising their hand either, so just one more time, this is the last time you have a chance to make any comments. It's during this hearing, and after we close the hearing, there will be no further comments made from the public. We will turn it back over to staff and to council to move forward. So if you would like to make a comment, this is the last call to raise your hand. Okay, I don't see any hands raised. We've given the public plenty of opportunity to make comments, and this information has been posted of what we're going to talk about tonight, so I am going to now officially close the hearing and bring it back to staff and council.
So mayor, um, thank you. So the, the process included the public advertisement for the property, collecting those proposals, reviewing it. We held a public work session last week for council to really dig into both proposer, proposals, ask questions, get some answers, and then tonight, we wanted to hold a public meeting, so then council could get information from the public on their thoughts about the two different projects. And then all of that was to then be collected in your minds as we go into an executive session following this meeting, for you to be able to provide direction to negotiators. And so I don't have anything else to share unless there's any questions from council.
Okay, let me look and see if I have any counsel at this time, since we're going to have a lot of discussion about this in the executive session. Probably, any council members, council Broyles?
Yeah, I just want to say that what I've heard so far, I like. I mean, it, it helps Alamosa, it's economic development, it'll help Arnold Salazar. And you know, we, I, I think it's a benefit to the city, so I don't want to go into a lot of detail, I'm just saying I'm, I'm in favor so far of what I've heard.
Thank you, Council Broyles, Council Grego?
Mayor, I, I just wanted to make a, well, I had a question. In the public hearing, were the proposers supposed to say something, or is that just for the public?
It was.
And I think Heather answered that for me, but I, I, you know, in past time, we've always had who's ever involved, at least give some kind of a spill or something, so people at home who are watching this or wherever they're watching it, they know exactly what's going on. Thank you.
So the direction we gave them was that staff would just do a quick overview, but that they are available if there's any questions. So they're just following the direction that's, that we gave them.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Council Grego. Okay, so I guess we'll just go ahead and move forward since we've closed the public hearing. Ms. Brooks, and just move on to the next item? Or do we need a motion or in any way?
No, mayor, we do not need a motion. So the next item, I do need to share my screen, if I can find it, so give me just one second. I, I know it's been a few months since we have discussed some of the work that we've been doing with the homeless related to COVID-19. Many months ago, council authorized us to work with the county and our La Puente and other partners on what is called a non-congregate shelter plan. And what that plan is for is if we have a unsheltered homeless individual who either tests positive, which then they need to isolate, or if they are showing symptoms, which then they need to quarantine. And the third category is if they fit a narrowly defined definition of what quantifies as high risk, we can put them in that shelter, and then we can submit those costs to FEMA for reimbursement. Now, the FEMA reimbursement is seventy-five percent of the cost. And so the spreadsheet that I'm going to review with you shows you how that seventy-five percent reimbursement can play out, depending on the number of people we have in the hotel. The reason I'm doing this presentation is prior to twenty twenty-one, we could use our CARES funding if we didn't get enough in-kind to cover that twenty-five percent that's not covered by FEMA. But we've used our CARES funding, and so what I'm just reviewing with council tonight is to run a different, a few different scenarios of what it could look like if we don't have enough individuals in the hotel. So I'm not going to get too much into the weeds on the formulas related to this, but I want to review quickly the major parts of the budget. So up here, under column A, you have our three categories that I went over. So the high-risk symptomatic or test positive, and we're thinking maybe on a monthly basis, we would have fifteen who fall into this, five who fall into symptomatic, five for this, which then, how many nights, so you know, fourteen nights for the quarantine and isolate, thirty for the high-risk. You multiply that out for a month, what does that equate to? And so you get a number of how many nights at a hotel we'd be paying for. The deal that we have worked out with the hotel is that the city will pay for the first three nights, and then the fourth night is comped. And the reason I'm pointing that out is because then that's part of what's used for that twenty-five percent match. We also have a site manager who needs to be there, so we'd be paying for that hotel, and it's the same situation, three nights, and then the fourth night is comped. The other part of the cost is related to the staffing. The site manager, which we do have, is Amanda Saxton. Um, this is the monthly income, we have not hired a day person, we have not had enough to trigger needing a day person, so we have not triggered that cost. This would be the fringe benefits, and then because this is not a forever type of job, and we needed to encourage someone with the right skill set to apply, we do have a stipend, a bonus, that if they finish the whole contract, they will get a five thousand dollar bonus. And then there's some other costs, so there's food, because if someone's having to stay in the hotel, they can't be out walking around getting food, those types of things. So the food service is actually provided by La Puente, and again, that can be used for our twenty-five percent match. Um, if you're in the hotel, you can't go and do laundry, so we have some funding in there for laundry. We have a donation from behavioral health of some laptops, so we can have telehealth for those individuals. Once the individuals move out, there might be some cleaning, especially if they were COVID-positive and those types of things, so we have a budget for that. And then we have a little bit of a contingency built in on if they needed transportation to, to the hospital or to get medicine or something like that, and then a little bit for PPE for the, for the site manager. So how this all works is you can add all of this up, and with these guesses of how many people might be in there in a month, there's a whole bunch of multiplying and adding. The cost come for seventy-five percent to be six, the total cost is about ninety thousand. Seventy-five percent of that, which would be reimbursed from FEMA is a sixty-seven, which means we would need to come up with twenty-two thousand. But because of La Puente providing the meals, and because of that fourth night of the hotel being comped, we meet that value requirement, and in fact, with those numbers up above, we're actually at thirty percent. What I wanted to review with you guys tonight, though, is we have not had these many people in the hotel at one time. And so if I start changing these numbers, I wanted to show you what it does. So the first price point is if we only have eleven people, we would want the day person, anything, you know, getting towards eleven, we do need help. So if we have eleven people, we're right at that twenty-five percent. So that's kind of key. When we start getting below eleven, so if I put nine people, if we only have nine people in a hotel, then we are short for that month of that in-kind match, so we don't actually have to do a hard expense of about one thousand one hundred and sixty-three. Now, what we're proposing, since we don't have CARES funding, is maybe if the city and county would be okay for the next couple of months, being willing to split this. Our hope is that the vaccine will get to the unsheltered homeless here fairly quickly. I think they are part of one B, they are below the line, but they should be coming up soon. So we are just talking a few months type of situation. Now, if we drop below nine, say if we only have seven, we don't need the day person, so I can delete that. And you can see, though, if we're at seven and I delete the day person, we're about eight hundred and forty-eight dollars short. Where we've been, for the most part, is more around three people. And at three, we are about three thousand dollars short. And so we may not be using all of this cleaning repair, which makes a difference. We may not be using some of the laundry, all of those things would probably be less as well, so it's probably less than three thousand. But without making the formulas really complicated, we just have it showing this way. So I, what I wanted just to do is share with council, I, I would say from a staff perspective, I recommend that we still do this non-congregate shelter. I don't think for our community, we want a homeless individual who might have COVID walking around and, and interacting with other people, that we need an environment that protects them and gives them the resources they need, but then also reduces the chances of the spread of COVID. But I wanted to make sure that council is aware of this. Gigi has invited me to do the same presentation for the county commissioners next week to see what their interest is from a potential partnership. So again, this is kind of a worst-case scenario. We're not talking a lot of months type of situation, so if, if we were to look at it and say for our worst case, for three months, this would be about nine thousand, and we would be, if we can split it fifty-fifty with the county, if they agree with, with it. Is there any questions, comments, feedback?
Okay, council, any comments? Let me see, one second. Okay, looks like we have a couple of hands raised up. We have Counselor Hensley, followed by Counselor Vehill, followed by Counselor Daniel.
Hey, so my question first is, what are the things that spark that somebody is high-risk?
Christina, can you answer that, because that's more of a medical answer, and we actually have public health who triages that. So public health has to make the determination that they qualify as high-risk. But Chris, you want to, Ms. Counselor Daniel, would you like to explain the underlying?
Sure, so depending on what underlying health conditions they may have, what other medications they may be on, their exposure risk, those kinds of things, they would get triaged by public health, and public health would say, yes, they're at a very high risk for contracting COVID, and they should be kind of isolated, quarantined from others. But those people would also be kind of under that quarantine guidance, because they're such high-risk, they shouldn't be out in the community either, so they would fall under all the same guidance as we would have someone on quarantine if they needed to stay, stay there. So my understanding is even the few people that we have triaged into the high-risk category, because it restricts them so much, they decided not to stay in the hotel, is my understanding, there had been a few, maybe two.
Okay, and so it's not, they, do they sometimes stay then for more than a month at a time?
So we only added this high-risk after realizing how hard FEMA was going to be on the hours that Amanda is working. Because the more people we have in for nights, then her salary is a hundred percent eligible. But if we don't have people in the hotel, then there's only, there's the small things we can have her do that still makes it eligible for FEMA reimbursement. So it actually works in our favor to get the high-risk individuals in the hotel to get the rest of the costs covered.
Okay, alright, up next, we have Counselor Vehill, followed by Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor Grego.
Hey Heather, so just a couple of questions, the, the item in blue, is that our cost, or is it the one in yellow?
So, so if you, let me back it up for you to help explain that. So this thirty-one thousand is the total cost. And so when we submit that to FEMA, they're only going to reimburse seventy-five percent, which means we would be responsible for this. But however, because of that hotel being comped, and because of the meals, which are kind of already included in that, that's why I have this tracking what those in-kind are, and then this is where you start seeing the difference between. So this is what, based on the total cost, what we'd be responsible, but based on the comps that we have, that's all those add up to, which means then we would be out three thousand.
Okay, and you, you're hoping to get that three thousand divided with the county?
That is the request that Gigi and I will be making the, for the presentation next week.
Okay, so here's my thoughts, is that if I, I'm only comfortable going along with this if the county goes with it too, because this is, this is a county issue as well, it's not always on the city. So I, I would really want the county to come aboard, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vehill, Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor Grego.
Well, thank you, mayor. I, first of all, thank you for this budget, I think that's going to be, I think it's really helpful, and I think it's going to really help, it helps me kind of wrap my head around what we were thinking in the matches, and so I appreciate that a lot. I believe this is a needed and necessary service. I also know the commissioners are new, two of the three, so I am very, very hopeful that they will get on board. And I, I want to, want to stress that, and I believe that if they don't, we have to find a way to cover this. But I do think it would be, it is a, an entire county issue, it's not just a city concern, but I think this is an absolutely needed and necessary service that we have to have for our very much at-risk population. So thank you for all the work, and I'm really impressed by the in-kind matches and, and the looking at how that would go. Did we have to submit the in-kind already to FEMA? Do they know what we're expecting as in-kind, or could potentially we get more if, if that makes sense?
Well, so because of some of the confusion and misinformation we received in the beginning about what the site manager could do if we didn't have anyone in the hotel, we've withdrawn that. So we are getting ready to then submit a different package, and it will go back to May when we had our first stay and hired Amanda. So there's no risk of that, but we're wording it differently. But as part of that submission, we will be submitting invoices from La Puente, showing the value of the number of meals and that it was provided as a comp, and then we will provide an attachment for the hotel for that fourth night to show the value of it and that it was for the comp, because FEMA is going to need to see invoices for everything to then know how those, how that in-kind is working. To my knowledge, I, we've got a pretty robust task force. So I would think if there was other potential in-kind out there, they would have thought of it, but I'm not sure, we haven't, if there is.
The only thing that I didn't see on here was the volunteer time. So for all of the volunteers that we had stay overnight in the, like, the pop-up shelters or the people on the COVID, like, doing the work to help support what they're doing and meeting with Amanda and those kinds of things.
So the pop-up related to the winter storm wouldn't be FEMA-eligible?
Okay.
Um, and so then I can check to see if the in-kind for outreach, if that, if that would be.
Thank you, I, I, it's like you read my mind, thank you, because I did not say it. Thank you. I, I, it's like you read my mind, thank you, cause I did not say it appropriately at all. Um, but we are, and for the, um, I know we had several meetings talking about this at the beginning too. And if we could count those volunteer hours, that, I mean, it doesn't give you a bunch, but it's a little bit more.
And I can check, um, because FEMA is kind of funky, so I'll double-check some of that.
And then if, like, let's say someone did decide that they wanted to donate now or bef- like, after we send the FEMA thing, and it would be, it could, does it have to go into the in-kind plan now to go to FEMA? Or could it come later and we count it as an in-kind match?
It can come later.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Daniel. Up next, we have councillor Grego.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, on, on the first frame that you showed, it seems like if we have that fifteen, did I read it right where it's negative, uh, we would have to come up with something?
No, so let me, let me show you those numbers. So the first one is, so when this is not negative, when this is positive, this is showing that, that our kind of in-kind isn't covering the full twenty-five percent. We need this number to be twenty-five percent or else there's a gap. That's what this yellow is. So if we only have three people in there, we have a gap of three thousand. I'm gonna put fifteen in there so you can see the difference, since that's kind of what you started with. So if we had fifteen people in there, we're doing thirty percent of the match, which means we're overmatched by five percent. We're to the good by five percent. That's what that means.
And, and you were saying, Heather, that you're gonna submit, uh, is that the package you're gonna submit, or is that a different package you're gonna submit?
The package we submit is the actuals. This budget is to just estimate, you know, if we have fifteen, what does it look like if we only have three? But when we submit to FEMA, it's the actuals. So we're actually gonna have every date listed, what Amanda's hours were, what meals were delivered, how many were in the hotel. All of that is actual data that we would submit.
My second question, this site manager that ninety-six hundred is for ho- how much time? A, a three-month period?
It's until, so we feel like if we get to a blue and we're there for a while, then maybe that's when we can stop the plan. Um, or when we feel like the, the homeless population, if we get a really good result on the vaccines, um, that could be another trigger. So it's, i- it's, I can't look in a crystal ball and tell you and I think we're gonna get to a blue, or how many of our homeless individuals will, will get the vaccine.
So, so the ninety-six represents a year? How many months?
It's a mon- it's a monthly. And so i- it's just you, we would multiply it by however many months this continues to go.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, councillor Gregor. Next, we have councillor Brawls.
I think you explained, this is like a temporary program, right? It's not a forever program?
Correct.
It's until we get to the blue stage?
Or if we get an amazing reaction and response from our homeless population on the vaccine, I think that could make a really big difference too. But of course, we would talk to public health, um, to make sure that they feel it's safe for us to end this. Because once we let go of the site manager, I mean, it's not easy to find someone who you would trust to be in a hotel at night, working with this population. And so it's, it's not just, you know, a high school kid type of thing.
Okay, yeah, I think I, I think I agree with councillor Beehill, that if the county's involved, uh, you know, the city should be involved.
Okay. All right. Up next, we have, um, councillor Hensley.
Sorry, one more question. So just doing the math on that, um, person, I guess Amanda, I forget what, um, the site manager. So if I did my math, if it's thirty dollars an hour and I took ninety-six hundred divided by thirty, that's three hundred and twenty hours in a month?
So I took thirty dollars times, oh, there's a, there's a typo here. I believe there's a typo here. So it's, it should be thirty dollars times forty hours a week, times four weeks.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, thank you. I just, I, I was just looking at that, so.
So, and then, so let me, let's just see what that does to the number. So if I, if we look at fifteen, you know, we're covered. Let me put three back in there, since that's kind of when we start. So it puts us, it, it creates a better situation. So instead of the three thousand, it's one thousand six hundred and fifty-eight. Thank you councillor Hensley. I am not sure how that happened.
I guess my question would be, Heather, so I know that she doesn't work eighty hours a week, but would there be in a month that she would work? I don't think she would work three hundred and twenty hours in a month, but are there weeks she would work more than forty hours because of the type of situation? Oh, she's, okay, so then it doesn't matter. Okay.
And she's salaried because she's on call and there's very minimal overs- oversight, those types of things.
Okay, um, I don't see any other, well, councillor Grego?
One more comment, uh, with councillor Rehe and councillor Brawls, uh, talking about the county, uh, being involved. I think if we show where you save it, like they said, in different areas, you know, it'll reduce that and they should be able to participate. You know, but if, once, uh, Heather gets that presentation and just like what she told us tonight, you know, if you take this spot off and you take that spot off and, and, and it lowers it, lowers it more and more. I, I, I don't see why they wouldn't be able to, uh, to participate.
Okay.
I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome. Um, looks like councillor Beehill wants to respond to your comment, councillor Beehill.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Just, I, I guess I should just clear, clean up why I said that earlier. And I agree with you councillor Daniel, that, the homeless are just every part of our community as anybody else, and during COVID, and I wanna help them as well. But it seems like, in my opinion, we took the brunt of the whole, uh, homeless camp because of COVID, and yet this, it's, it's in the county as well. And, and I think that just the county needs to step up a little bit. And if they, if they don't wanna participate, I think they will. If they don't wanna participate, I think that needs to be known. And if they don't, I would say, let's just pick it up and do it. So, but I want that to be known. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Beehill. Okay, I don't see any, um, He- Heather, I see your hand now. Go ahead.
I will say, um, I do really think it's a good sign that Gigi wants to have me come do this presentation and explain it. And, um, she did not seem, um, to have any red flags or any barriers upfront. So I, I wanna make sure I'm clear with that, with council. And so, um, I, I think there's a good chance that, you know, again, with the commissioners being new and, and, and some, you know, it's kind of hard to start committing to things when you're new. So I'm not sure how it will go.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Brooks. Okay, I don't see any other councils, uh, hands up, except councillor Beehill. I'm not for sure if he just didn't, um, lower it, okay? So, um, I'll just make a comment and then, Ms. Brooks, I'll ask you if you need a consensus or if you want us to make a motion. Um, but I'm in favor of anything that we can do as a council to help prevent the spread of COVID nineteen in our community. Even though it would be a nice gesture for the county to participate, if they decide that this is not the best thing for them, I think for us as a city, we should do all that we have within our power to make sure that we help prevent the spread of COVID nineteen. I hope the numbers go down. I hope they go below three to zero, eventually disappear altogether. But if it goes down and we have to pay a little bit of, uh, out of our pocket right now, sometimes you have to go through a little, uh, short-term pain to have a long-term gain. And I'm hoping that as a council, we would do the responsible thing in making sure that we help continue to do everything to prevent the spread of the virus in our community. So with that being said, I will, uh, turn it back over to Ms. Brooks to see if she wants a consensus or if she needs us to make a motion.
I feel like there's consensus and, and I'm good. Um, Eric, do you, are you okay if we just end it here? I, I know we just noticed it as a discussion.
Yeah, no, I think it's fine to end it here. I, I do note that depending on what the county wants to do, we may end up with an IGA coming back to council. But at this point, if, if we're doing it and we're just asking for some contribution from the county, I don't think that that even would be necessary.
And I will say, just in regards to this partnership, we can maybe do an IGA, but I'll also just say, um, but with La Puente and the county and the city, both for the Walsh fire and this, we have worked really well together. And so one person would pay for it and then just send the appropriate invoices to the other entities as well, too. So there maybe, or maybe not.
Okay. Alrighty, so we'll go ahead and move forward, uh, down the agenda to, uh, human resources and risk management. The first reading of ordinance number two dash twenty-two-one.
Thank you, mayor. Um, this is an idea that Chief Anderson brought and, um, Jolene and I felt that it was a very good idea. Um, as you know, and I, and we've talked about it in the past, and, and even prior to this year, um, those who are applying to go into law enforcement, those numbers continue to go down. And it becomes harder and harder to hire law enforcement officers, and that's a nationwide trend. Um, if you look at rural communities to try to attract police officers to our community with our pay, um, different amenities than what the big city can offer, sometimes that's good. Um, but it can be challenging, cause the pay's not comparable. And so without TSJC's Police Academy, in all honesty, the San Luis Valley would really be hurting when it comes from a law enforcement perspective. And so right now, we have four vacancies. We've had those openings for a while. We've applied. Um, we've had a few that we have looked at and got into the background stage, but they didn't make it out of that. And so we're just left with these four vacancies and it's becoming harder. Um, coupled with that, we also have two officers out on injury leave. So we're really actually down six officers again. What the chief was proposing is if we could give him some more flexibility on the hiring, we could get some of those spots filled quicker, um, and identify some of the, um, stars that are in the academy. And so how it would work is creating a new position that would be two grades lower than what a police officer position is. It would be called a police apprentice. They're non-certified. And what we could do is make an offer to someone who's in the police academy. And what that would allow us to do is we could complete the background check, which can sometimes take more than a month. We can start the sixteen-week FTO program where they're shadowing another officer, they're learning certain things. They don't have a gun, they're not on their own, so it would be okay. And then once they graduate and take the post-test and pass, um, then we would reclassify them into the regular police officer position. We would obviously have something in writing that if they don't pass within a certain amount of time, then their position, their employment with the city would cease, because it, it truly is to try to get someone in um, and, and get them started on that path to then become a police officer. This does not create any additional FTEs. It does not have any additional impact to the budget, because we're not having extra people. We're just allowing the police department to have a little bit more flexibility, um, in, in hiring. Chief Anderson, did you wanna add anything else?
Yeah, I'm waiting for my camera. There it is. Um, well, Heather does a great job with this, cause, uh, she didn't leave a whole lot for me to explain. Uh, anyway, Mr. Mayor, council, it's good to see everybody. Hope you're all doing good. Um, I mean, she covered most of it. You know, thi- this position obviously is a, it's a non-certified position. We're trying to get our, you know, our, I guess, our, our hooks in these individuals as, as soon as we can. And I'll tell you why. It, it is, it's a nationwide issue that's going on. This is not just Alamosa PD. My effort is for Alamosa PD. Um, so I'm trying to get the best qualified candidates that I can. The problem is, I have to wait until May, when they graduate. And we have several other departments, um, that come down here and do a recruitment as well. And these departments have already scooped up quite a few of them. So if what we're trying to propose, if you guys approve this, um, it'll actually give us a little more leverage. It'll show that we are interested in these, these cadets. Um, we've got a pretty extensive background that we do on this. And I really am, I just refuse to lower my standards. I think the community deserves to have trustworthy officers that are dependable and reliable. Um, we've got a great department. Um, but, you know, it's a small department and four down right now with two injuries, so six down. Two and a half years ago, when, when the city manager promoted me, we were down seven. So we've hired quite a few, but it's almost a revolving door, um, to where they move on to bigger departments. You know, I won't name any, any department specific, but they do, you know, and, and I can't blame them. I'll help them as much as I can. But my focus is, is truly with the city of Alamosa. So this would be a position that would be roughly five months, um, where they're being ghosted by a field training officer. Um, they're not gonna be wearing a uniform. They'll be wearing a pair of BUs and a, and a Alamosa PD polo. They're not gonna carry a firearm. They will not have a badge. They won't be driving police cars. They will be basically mirroring this training officer. Um, there are things that we can kind of get ahead of the, ahead of the curve here, is we can teach them our report-writing system, which is pretty complicated. We can teach them how to write police reports. Um, they can watch us testify in court. They can do VIN inspections. They can assist on traffic accidents. They can learn how to do traffic control. I mean, the list goes on and on about what they can learn. And we can get them certified on, on several things that we have to get certified as peace officers to do as well. So it'll save time. I think it will benefit the city. Um, and it will definitely give me a little leverage so that we can, we can get ahead of the game on this and actually get some guys and gals. So I appreciate your time. Um, I really hope you guys do consider this and that's all I got. So thank you guys very much. And thank you, Heather. By the way, that was, that was good.
Thank you, Chief Anderson. Don't disappear yet. Looks like we have quite a few hands, uh, raised. And, um, I'll take you, your hands, uh, in order. Uh, Liz, uh, Ms. Hensley, uh, councillor Hensley, councillor Daniel, followed by councillor Grego, then councillor Brawls. So, uh, councillor Hensley, you're up.
So I think this is an awesome idea. I think most of you know is that I run our internship program in the School of Business. And I totally support the idea of hands-on experience. I think more and more organizations, uh, they use interns, classified as interns, with the idea of seeing if that's a good fit. Also, besides the training and all the learning they can do, it also is that I did it each, both you, chief, and your staff, as well as then the intern, um, that comes in, is you're both, in a way, interviewing and testing each other out. And what happens then is usually, is then you're gonna have a better chance of then, if that fit happens after the five months and both, both decide, hey, we like working with each other, then chances are you're gonna have somebody who stays with you longer is much more. They come in, by that time that five months is done, they're ready to go and they're even that much more ahead of the game. Uh, so I am a hundred percent behind this. I think this is a fantastic idea.
Thank you councillor Hensley. Appreciate that. Councillor Daniel, followed by councillor Grego, then councillor Brawls.
Thank you, mayor. And thank you, chief and Heather, for this. I do think this is an amazing idea. I'm very excited about that. Um, I did have some kind of like de- I guess, detailing questions. So you said it would be five months. So would you only ever hire the apprentices in, like, January? And do they graduate in May? And so how long is their, their training and how much training would they have had before that time starts?
So the academy starts in August. Um, I'm looking at, at January, because I want a chance, cause it, so, I don't know if you all know this, but, so George Dinkfelder, the chief of Monti PD, is the director. I served directly under him as the assistant director. So I've got my hands really involved in the academy. I need a little bit of time to learn the students, get to know them. Um, you know, and that's, that's, it's great to be part of the academy, because I get that chance. I can't just pick people that would be a great fit for our agency, just by the way they look and, and having a five-minute conversation. So I really do wanna get to know them. Um, and then, like I say, we do a, a really extensive background. And then, like I say, we do a really extensive background. We'd be doing the same thing on these, on these employees is we'd still do an extensive background. We do a psychological evaluation. And that's why I'm just stressing the fact that it's, I'm really into the qualified candidates that we're bringing in. Because lately I've, I've disqualified a few, but that's because we're not going to lower our standards and, you know, that's, that's basically it. But yeah, I would like to, to do this in January. I know I'm rambling, but that's just to get to know the students.
So the program is nine months. And so this would be a little more than halfway through is when you would pick them?
Yes.
The Counselor Daniel, to be specific, we're not having a hard line of January. It's going to be approximately around that time based on the information the chief just shared.
Excellent, excellent. And then obviously they will still be in class and doing those things. Will this interfere with their classes at all or will they need to have a weird wonky schedule because of working and class?
No, so class starts at 6:00 PM and we can schedule them completely around that.
Okay. And then I would just, you know, let the people who run the police academy know not to let the big cities come down and recruit our students. Just tell them to stay away.
You know, and that, I know, no, I got you. I mean, like I say, my effort is here. I'm, I'm strong for Alamosa, but you know, I, I definitely support law enforcement as a whole. You know, we've just, we've got to help each other out and that's, you know, I'll just keep doing that, so.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Daniel. And Counselor Grego, followed by Counselor Brawls.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, great, great thinking. You know, I, I think, I think a program like this would really work. I guess my question is, we prepare these students, we pay them. There's no guarantee in keeping them, right? They could, at the end of the program, they can go somewhere else and stuff like that.
So it's like any other employee. I mean, so we're hiring them and the goal is that they get, they, they graduate, and then we reclassify them. So the, the employment, the goals to never have the employment end. So any employee could leave after a year or, or something like that, too. So I don't know until we try it, how many will stay with us and how many are like, hey, this is great experience, but I've always planned on going to a bigger department. It's, it's, it might be a little hard to predict, but I have a feeling with the chief having that much hands-on work with them prior, he will probably have a bit of a fill, which ones are going to want to stay local and which ones might be looking to bigger departments.
Thank you. Good job, Chief.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Brawls.
Yes, uh, no, I, I support this proposal. I, I think it's, it's good. My, my concern is I think it's going to get more challenging to be able to hire good police officers. I was reading the police report for the year in the packet. And I have to say, you know, our police department does a lot of, a lot of work with the amount of police that you have. So I commend you and, and I just think that the problem or the challenge, I don't think it's a problem. I think it's a challenge, is going to grow and, you know, we might have to even come back later with a higher rate, uh, plan for higher rates, so. Might keep that in mind, but I think it's a good, I think it's a good proposal. We just have to stay on top of it to make sure our city has the correct police staff to, to keep our public safe and to keep our city going. So thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Brawls. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised at this time. Counsel comments in regards to this? Okay, I would accept a motion then, Counselor Grego.
If there's no further questions, I'd make a motion that we pass on first reading ordinance number two dash twenty twenty-one and set it for a public hearing on February the third at seven o'clock or sooner after.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Okay, I, I'll just let, make the, make a real quick comment, Chief. I want to thank you for your creativity and, and thinking of ways to be flexible. As council, we always want to make sure that you have the tools and the resources that you need to staff your team and also make sure that you can be effective and efficient in everything that you all do. And we really appreciate that. We don't ever, ever, ever want to see you have to lower your standards to recruit anyone, especially in our PD department because it could really jeopardize the integrity of our whole system. So thank you for thinking of these creative ways to make this work out for the city as a whole. So we have a motion. We have a, a second. No further discussion. Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Brawls?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Beehill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have committee reports. Do we have any committee reports, Counselor Brawls? I'll see you have your hand up.
I'm sorry, nope. That should be down, so thank you.
You're welcome. No worries. Counselor Hensley?
Give me one sec to pull up my notes. Alrighty, so I had a couple of meetings. I was at marketing board. And so basically they're starting to look at budget for next year and the idea of trying to build back that idea of tourism and being a little bit more proactive versus reactive to promoting different types of tourism to our community. So that's real exciting. The other thing is a vote was made on the motorway. I know last year we had discussed that the motorway was going to be torn down and made into green area, parking RV, that type of thing. And then because of COVID, we stopped that process. And then there was discussion again about potentially trying to sell the building. But it was decided at the last meeting that we are going to go ahead and put it in our budget to create parking slash RV slash green space out of that building. So I'm starting to get, go forward with that. So I thought that was exciting, good news for our downtown. So that's the news there. I was also at the tree board meeting. And so had a, a, boy, I'll tell you, that committee is so awesome. They're just so energized. And so basically finalizing some details and the application for the sharing of if people purchase a tree. There's definitely specifications. I don't want to spread something that's not correct, but that idea of similar to the sidewalks. If somebody wants to plant a tree and it is in the right of way, that idea of sharing that expense. And so we're working on some of that finalization. So that was some exciting news. Working on some grant stuff as well there. And then I also, just the other day, got to go to the Main Street Advisory Board as the alternate. And boy, the optimism of that group is fantastic. And that idea of, of the, the different people from the, that own businesses in our downtown and they're so creative. And I have to tell you, it really is refreshing to see sort of new ideas and that idea of trying to be optimistic and trying to look at the bright side of what's going on. And I also want to commend, it really came to light, Heather, Lisa, Kathy, they are rock stars when it comes to the care funding and how they were able to stretch that and make that go so many different directions and really use that money to the best for our community. So anyway, just great vibrant discussions. I wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hensley. Appreciate that report. Next, we have Counselor Grego.
Mayor, I just wanted to thank Liz. She's the alternate for the Main Street deal and I wasn't able to make it, but I think it's so important that we continue working with that group and I appreciate Liz picking that up. I know you have a heavy schedule and thank you so much. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Appreciate that. Okay, so I don't see any other committee reports. That brings us on down to staff announcements. Ms. Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a few. The first one is I wanted to let you know that we are starting the process for the charter franchise renewal. The current franchise actually goes until February twenty twenty-three, but there's quite a process that, that includes some conversations with charter, doing the needs assessment and evaluating our current franchise, making sure we think it's appropriate, but also maybe doing a survey for the community to see if there's any issues from a user perspective and to fold those in and then also have a work session with council at some point in the future as well. And so we're starting the ball rolling with that and just wanted to let you know that there's going to be more to come as it relates to that. I also wanted to let you know that we are starting to have some significant issues with the HVAC unit at the rec center and trying to get some of the parts for it is extremely challenging because of the age of the system. We are going to look at applying for a mineral impact grant to see if we can help reduce that cost. And then Andy can, he's already seen some savings. We're just still in the first month of twenty twenty-one, but he's already seen some savings that hopefully we can put towards then the city's match in order to get that project done. If we're not successful in getting that mineral impact grant, then we'll probably talk to you about bumping a different capital project in order to get the HVAC system fixed. So wanted to give you a bit of a heads up with that. I also wanted to share with you, the mayor and I were talking in our meeting yesterday and, you know, always wanting the city to be as transparent as possible and for people to know what we do and what we don't do sometimes. And I think with COVID, a lot of times we've talked about how it made it clear that a lot of people don't understand what the city does, what the city staff do, what council does, how it relates to public health and doesn't, and all of those different things. And then you, you lay that over with stress and that fear and, and those types of things. And so in my mind, I was always thinking of what could we do once COVID is done as far as public meetings and getting out there more. But after yesterday's discussion, we were thinking, maybe we don't have to wait until COVID's over. Maybe we could do some things virtually. It's not the same. But maybe we could do a Zoom meeting that's coffee with the mayor or a coffee with Ward One or coffee with at-large representatives or something like that. And so that way it can be just an open-ended, people can sign on, ask any questions. Obviously myself and maybe a few other staff would be there in case there's questions that you don't know the answer to. But we're just kind of trying to think through that. I know Counselor V Hill, this is an idea you had probably four years ago to do it in person, so not new information for you. But I will be getting with Jasmine to maybe work with you guys, pick some times that work for you, that work for the public and really just try to make us more accessible and, and more transparent type of situation. I also wanted to go over, thank you, Counselor Hensley's sharing on the cares, because I did want to share with council because when I, when I communicate about this, I'm grateful for two things. I'm grateful for council and the clear direction and leadership you guys gave on how to spend this care's funding. And some of it took strength and guts. And, and so I want to say thank you to that and it took discussions. But I also want to thank staff too, because without them rolling up their sleeves and figuring out how to do some of this, it just, it, it would have been impossible. But some of the numbers in regards to a business perspective, where we've landed closing everything out is for our business loans, what started out as loans, we issued two hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred dollars, so over two hundred thousand. Once we were able to figure out the final cost for the rest of the care stuff, we could forgive ninety-four percent of that. So that is amazing. They still have eighteen months at zero percent to pay the tiny little six percent that, that they have remaining on that loan. And so I think the businesses, some almost cried and, and they were extremely appreciative of that. And so for Lisa and Kathy, making sure we had all the I's dotted and T's crossed and all the information is, was really, really great. But that's not all that, that we did from a down, from a perspective for businesses. The downtown project for twenty twenty, some of the engineering, the parklets, some of the outdoor furniture, if we factor in the hundred and thirty thousand we received in plus what we did with care's funding, that's another two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars of unanticipated projects that we didn't have on our radar for twenty twenty that we managed to leverage and get some stuff done that will have a direct impact to support businesses. I also want to share for you the utilities reimbursement, which businesses could apply, but it was also geared a lot more towards residents. That final number was over seventeen thousand. So that's a lot of people. We were able to help keep their utilities during this time. And so I'm really grateful for that. Additionally, Kathy and Aaron continue to work on the five-star program. We do have communication with the county and public health related to that, so we are continuing that. Additionally, Lisa's been taking the lead on getting the Small Business Relief Fund up and going. And we found out from DOLA that we are getting fifty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-six. And so that deadline for businesses to apply is February eighth. It's quick. Thankfully, the state gave us a little bit more time to get the money out. So instead of the, I think it was like the twelfth, we had to have it out. But we can get to the nineteenth now. So it's still going out fast, but we get a little bit of breathing time to, to get that out. The rest of the care's funding, as you know, a big chunk was for cleaning, getting the right PPP, putting the Plexiglas up, a lot of those types of things, the face masks, all of that. But then the other chunk was related to homelessness as well and making sure that we pivoted in order to respond to that population as well. And so I wanted to kind of just, as we close the care's funding out, let you guys kind of know where some of those, those dollars ended. It also ties into, I think I've mentioned it, but I don't know if I gave enough details. Like the, the whole COVID nineteen could have been so much more overwhelming. And with the team we have though, we made it through. And there's not, we had, it was a full team effort. We had council who was asking the right questions and having the tough conversations and weighing very diverse opinions from this community and doing it with professionalism and civility. And then from a staff perspective, it was a pure team effort. I mean, we had Public Works looking at it from a facility, like how, how do we clean? How do we make this safe as an employer? How do we keep the facilities safe? What are the schedules to keep the water and wastewater treatment plants running in case someone has to quarantine? And from a street perspective, let's get these projects done because that puts money into the economy. And so there was tons of stuff from a Public Works and keeping the building department going. Fire and police, keeping their crew safe and responding to the public and interacting with the public during this time and making sure that everyone is safe. A lot of social unrest and making sure we were prepared for those types of things, if you think back on some of that. IT, making sure we had all the tools to do telework and, and that we could work remotely and that everything ran as smoothly as possible. Economic development, I've already touched on some of the loans, but Kathy out there talking with the businesses, connecting them to resources. Jolene with HR, figuring out what we have to do as an employer, because there's a lot of legislation out there that we had to do from a leave time and how we pay employees and all of that. Public information, getting the information out there and helping us process it. Finance, keeping track of all this spending and the paperwork that goes with it to get the reimbursement and all of the untangling that goes there. Parks and Rec probably gets the most creative badge. They think outside the box and it's, it's that devotion to, you know, we are here to serve the public and bring recreation and, and that stimulation to the, the community. How can we do that in a safe manner? And really getting creative court, municipal court and figuring this out, how we can keep that running. And then I can't underestimate Eric because there's times I can keep track of what the changes were and what order and what. And what expired and what didn't. And Eric was there to be able to make sure that we were current. And we knew what, that we were relying on the most accurate information and all of that. And so I just really need to give a shout out to, to staff. Because with all the different ways we touch the community, it wasn't just trying to figure out public health, which none of us were experts. And how to help the community feel safe. It was also making sure that our operations worked. And it wouldn't have been possible without the amazing team that we have. And so I know this is a little bit longer, so I just, but I felt like. For everything we've been through for this past year, I really think the department heads and their staff need a huge pat on the back. Because it's been a lot. And I just am so fortunate to work with such top-level professionals. And, and I'm grateful for that all the time. And then with that, Harry, you get to go now.
All right. Well done, Heather. Uh, good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. It's also, it is nice to see everyone. Um, a few months ago, we applied for a water quality improvement grant. It's sponsored and supported by C D P H E. Um, what this grant really does is it supports water, wastewater and stormwater needs in municipalities. And we identified that we needed to assess and, and, and design our BI-LAC system at the. Waste water treatment plant. So we applied for the grant, uh, for ninety thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And today we were notified that we were awarded that, that money. So it's certainly gonna help with engineering design work. And we're excited to, um, you know, get moving forward on this project. It's, it's very much needed. So, that's all I had.
Good job, great job. And, and thank you, Heather, for recognizing the entire team and their efforts. Uh, and thank you, Harry, for your team's, uh, effort and the work that you all have been doing. Appreciate that. All right, good job, everybody. Okay, that brings us on down the agenda to, um, council comments. Um, I'll recognize council who may have comments, uh, with your hands raised. Looks like we have a, a new member joining us, uh, with Counselor Carson. Adorable little baby right there, so. Okay.
He doesn't have any comments tonight, though.
Not right now. Right. All right, thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Grego, followed by Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, thank you for those comments. You know, we have a great staff. We have a, a great council. And in watching the inauguration today, it only brought me back to appreciate what we have. And what we've been operating with all, all this time when other communities are tearing, so, uh, tearing themselves apart. We got a great community and I think as long as we continue to operate, and we're all different, I know we are. But yet we, as Heather said, we bring that professionalism to the table. And we're able to disagree and agree and make it good for the community. And I, it just, today it just brought it back so strongly, you know, and I've been here a long time and I've witnessed various councils. But I, I just wanna thank, uh, staff and the council for doing what they do for our community. Not only in the city of Alamosa, but. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Grego. Thank you for those comments and we appreciate your efforts too, Counsel Grego. You're welcome. Okay, up next we have Counselor, uh, Daniel, followed by Counselor Carson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, this has been a really uplifting end of January meeting. I mean, for, as, as cold as it is and things like that, like there were some really good things that we got to talk about. And so thank you, team, for that. And I have to say, I feel like we did, we had our ups and downs in twenty twenty. And it was a kinda rocky at some points, but I do think that we pulled together and the team that we have is amazing. Um, so thank you, Heather, and thank you, Holly and Eric and the whole entire team, all the department heads. Um, it is so apparent, um, that things are, are rolling and, and going well. I also wanted to say I'm really still excited about the, um, Rio Freeo virtual run and doing some of the things and the, um, backward. The reverse water, uh, pull or plunge. So Ty, we've gotta, we gotta represent, man. We gotta do that.
That's right, we represent. Let it be known, everybody out there, we're representing. We hope you all represent.
So we'll, we'll get cold with everybody. Um, and as Counselor Grego said, really excited about the inauguration today. And, you know, looking forward, there was a, I think a, a really good quote that I read today about, you know, the greatest things. Like peace, all of these things that are really good. Peace is one of the biggest ones you, you know, that we strive for. And it starts with really small acts and it starts with ourselves and being kind and peaceful with others. And so if we can continue to be kind and peaceful on all of our regular people levels. It will grow into the community levels and everything. And so I'm just really, I'm taking that into twenty twenty-one, I think. The other thing I just wanted to let everyone know is there are several COVID nineteen vaccine events happening throughout the San Luis Valley. And so right now, if there are people who are interested in that vaccine, they have to be seventy or older still. Or in one of the, um, the categories that are above the line. But if they're interested in that, getting that vaccine. They are being given at all of our, um, health organizations. Valleywide is holding events. S L B Health is, um, scheduling people. Rio Grande Hospital and our public health are all working together to really make sure people have access to this vaccine. So if there are people in your lives who you know want to have the vaccine, please have them reach out to any of those organizations. And we can get them hooked up, um, and get them served fairly quickly. Um, so really excited about that if they are interested in having that in their lives. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. We really appreciate that. Okay, up next we have, uh, Counselor Carson.
Um, I, I'm sorry, I did have one comment. I, I, I wanted, uh, to, I wanted to say, uh, thank you. To Chief Anderson and to Heather for the implementation and the idea of that program. I think it's something that we've needed for a while. Uh, I think it will help with retainment. I think it will help with, uh, extremely help with understanding the candidates. And, and, and the people he wants to bring into the department and the best for the community. So I really wanted to say thank you. Uh, I think that's a great idea. And yeah, uh, thank you, guys, council, um, and staff. It was a challenging year. And I think twenty twenty will do, will do great because we've done great. Um, we've done great through the challenges we faced and, uh, I think we'll continue to do so. Uh, like I've said a hundred times, I love working with this group. I feel privileged every time I get to, to help and to be part of it. So thank you, guys. And again, thank you, Chief. That's a great idea. Look forward to the rest of the year and we'll see you guys later.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Carson, and you have an adorable baby there.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. So we have a, a work session, um, coming up. I, I just don't want you to go too far.
Executive session.
I'm sorry, executive session. Sorry about that. Executive session coming up here shortly. All right, so I don't see any other hands, uh, raised at this time. I just like to encourage everybody to, uh, continue to be the wonderful people you are. And, uh, participate if you can in the Rio Freeo, uh, activities that are coming up. Um, I, I think whenever the community sees us out in, out in the community, it makes them feel, uh, like we're part of the community even more. So please participate if you can. Um, all right, so with that being said, brings us to the executive session. Um, do we need to, we, do we need to take a motion to go into executive session?
Yes.
Okay. So.
Mayor, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statute, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four A. To discuss the sale or swap of all portions of all or portions of a seventy-five acre portion of the Alamosa Ranch along Highway seventeen.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Bee Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Brawls?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, so we will move on into executive session. Uh, Ms. Martinez, is there another link that we have to be on? Okay, so.
You'll leave this webinar and it's in, it's in your email.
Okay, so we'll, we'll leave this, uh, meeting. How about we, um, start at eight twenty-five, everybody? Did I give enough, take a little break or so and we're going to say, twenty-five. When we come out of executive session, no further business, uh, will be discussed. Should I cover everything, Counselor Sueso? All right, good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.